...point four, moment of silence. We have three deaths to come in. Jane Ellen Smith-Dring of Newport passed away on Sunday, April 14th in Middletown. Mrs. Dring graduated from the University of Rhode Island with a BS in pharmacy and was a registered pharmacist at the Newport Hospital. Mrs. Dring was the wife of the late Arthur M. Dring, Jr., who retired as a teacher in administration from Newport Public Schools. Mrs. Dring is survived by her four children. John F. Hasak-Cokernack passed away Sunday, Saturday, April 20th in Denver, Colorado. Mr. Cokernack was employed by the Newport Public Schools for 28 years as an elementary teacher at both Carrion and Cogshill Schools, retiring in 1999. Mrs. Cokernack is survived by her two children. Mrs. Cokernack's husband, Russell R.J. Cokernack preceded her death. Third was Regional Fay Fraser of Port Washington, New York. Passed away at home on Monday, April 22nd, 2013. Mrs. Fraser was a lifelong resident of Port Washington, graduating from Port Washington High School in 1952, an active member and participated in many of the local organizations. She was the wife of Richard Fraser, who is deceased, and the mother of three daughters, Pamela, Margaret, and Newport Public Schools Human Resource Secretary Elizabeth Ostrich. Now we go to item number two, which is public comment. Anybody signed up?
Yes, I got two.
Oh, okay. Emily Zilly and Brittany Coleman.
Hi. Hi.
Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Emily Zilly. I am a science teacher here at Rogers High School, and I've been in the district for 11 years.
I'm Brittany Coleman, and I'm also a science teacher here at Rogers, and this is my fifth year here at the district.
We just came here tonight because we are concerned about a cut that's happening in the Science Department at Rogers High School. A .6 science position, as of right now, has been cut for the next coming school year. That's a teacher, her name is Beth Copely. She's been with us for several years. She teaches three science classes, and with this cut, we will be losing the AP Sciences, AP Biology, AP Chemistry, and AP Physics. We'll all lose a lab period that goes along with all of those classes. Since their inception, AP Chemistry and AP Physics in the 80s and with AP Biology in the last several years, they've always had a lab period, which allows us to teach the content that goes along with those courses as provided by the College Board. Those three classes also, students can receive college credit through Rhode Island's EEP program, and with that, that puts those programs in jeopardy because we may not be able to cover all of the content that Rhode Island College says we need to cover in order for those students to receive the credits. Several students, I mean, for years, students have been able to get these college credits at a fraction of the cost. AP Chemistry comes with eight college credits, AP Biology is able to provide four, and AP Physics is also able to provide four credits. So we provide a college-level education for 16 credits for our science classes, and we're concerned that we will not be able to do that without this .6 position. We've also lost some electives that go with that that students had been interested in signing up in. We have kids who really enjoy taking science classes. We are normally the second most enrolled department in the school, English being the first because they require four years of a class. Science, we only require three years, and generally, kids like to take our classes, like to take our lab sciences, like to take more than just the two years of required lab science courses. So that's a concern of ours also. Science and math being such a big push right now, where jobs are, where kids are, that's what the fields of jobs that we're looking to fill. We have had a great science program. We would like to maintain the integrity of that and continue to put kids in college courses and get them prepared for college, and also keep that interest level up to them of just having, rather than just taking the generic biology, chemistry, physics, we like to offer them the physiology. We like to be able to offer them the additional classes, the earth sciences, all those other things that interest the students, the forensic science that we're going to be able to offer as well. We want to be able to continue doing that to keep their interest level. The University of Rhode Island has recently just put in a new biotechnology building. They're putting lots of money into a beautiful facility. They just built a brand-new pharmacy building as well, and they are currently under construction for a brand-new chemistry building, clearly showing the level of interest and where the jobs are in beautiful facilities in science and math. So we would hope that the school committee would recognize that, would support us in that, and help us keep that .6 position that will give us the flexibility to have our AP Lab Sciences and to have those additional classes that keep students so interested in science at Rogers High School.
I'm going to have to cut you off here. Thank you very much. The rules on public comment, if it's on the agenda, we can comment. It's not on the agenda. However, tentatively, was scheduled for this Thursday to have a budget meeting, but due to Dr. Ambrosi's illness, that meeting may be put off a week. So at that point, your issues should be, you should bring them up again, and we can't comment at that time. So thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Zilly.
Emily Zilly.
No, she just.
Oh, I see. It's not separate.
It's this one.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you. Mark Mushanik.
Shaden.
I'm sorry.
I'm here at the behest of Joe Gaines that I talked with the other day. I was up in a parking lot in Middletown, at the Michael's Parking Lot, and there was a first-student bus there just sitting wide open and unattended. In light of the events less than a month ago in Boston, I felt this was a very unsafe situation. I took a video of it and uploaded it to YouTube. It's not the first time I've seen one of their buses left wide open and unattended, and I just don't feel that the company that is now running the transportation for our children is very competently run, and I'd like to see some other company perhaps take the new contract, especially with the new school going up at Pell.
Thank you. This is going to be discussed later, but unfortunately, it's probably going to be discussed in closed section, but we'll get to that later. We have some resolutions. Becky, you want to start off?
Do you want to change the agenda?
Well, I want, don't you want to get the resolutions out of the way? Because these kids want to get out of here, I think. Becky, go ahead, start.
Well, it's always a great day when we can honor students, and tonight we have some Rogers students that have stood out above the rest, and so I'd like to call both of them up here. We have Jackson Baker. And Eric Sola. Is he here?
He's at play practice.
He's at play practice, or he'd be here, okay. And would their director like to come up too?
Come on in.
Yeah, come on up. Are you their director? No, you're.
I'm the advisor.
You're the advisor. I knew that.
She's the director.
She's the director. No, I was going to be the director.
I have time now.
All right, so Eric received, this is when they went to the Rhode Island Skills USA, right?
Correct.
Correct, and that was in what month? That was?
It was March. They competed in March.
Come on up here. You can tell them what it was.
The Newport Area Career and Technical Center sent 19 students to compete in 42 competitions, but we only competed, like, in seven. And out of that, we had.
Use the mic. You won't get on TV.
I don't mind that either.
We competed in about eight contests. We won four medals. We won gold, one gold, no, two gold, I'm sorry, a silver and a bronze. The gold, silver, and bronze was Academy of Information Technology. We swept the category for the second time, and that is one of the biggest contested contests they have there. So we are doing something right. Mrs. Ord and kids are doing something right. We have automotive, which, he's a student from Tivernan, taking classes here at the Newport Area Career and Technical Center. He is a senior. He's done very well. We all should be proud of him in all of them. Skills is a good thing. Again, this is my last year doing it. I said this last year, so I want you all to take, please, take an interest in making sure somebody steps up to the plate. It's very important for these kids to compete. They go on to nationals to compete against the top 2% in the nation, Puerto Rico, Guam, and the Virgin Islands. It's an experience. This is where the jobs are. So thank you. But anyway.
Thank you. So I'd like to present our gold medal finalist here, Jackson Baker, and this is a real honor to be up here with somebody so gifted at technology. We hope you someday come back because we could use it here in Newport, probably. All right? Thanks. All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Sola. All right, David Richards, could you call it?
He's at the play.
He's though.
At the play.
Well, David got a bronze medal in technical computer applications. Is his parents here?
They're probably at the play.
And the final one is another gold. If I can open it up. Cody Alvarez. Good.
This is a gold medal in automotive technology. Congratulations.
Nice mechanic.
I don't have the, I shouldn't be ridiculous.
Student council? Student council?
Oh, all right, yes, sure. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Hainos. I'm a senior at Rogers, and I'm here filling in for Gabby Hermes tonight, who couldn't be here because of play practice as well. Roger students have reached the midterm of their fourth quarter. Sports are in full swing, and many teams have playoff hopes. And there is a post-grad fundraiser this Thursday at O'Brien's Pub at 4:00 PM. Please consider attending to help fundraise the post-grad graduation activities for the class of 2013. Tickets are $20, and if you are interested in going this Thursday night, you can either contact Ms. Melissa Henry, who's a teacher here at Rogers, or Ms. Boland, who's just telling me how she has tickets for it as well, if you are interested in going. And lastly, the Rogers Theatre Company will present its spring musical, Guys and Dolls, this weekend in the Rogers Auditorium. Showtimes are Friday at 7:00 PM and Saturday at two times, 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Please come and show your support for our Rogers students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Now I'm going to ask for a change of the agenda.
So moved.
We're going to move the item, School Transportation, which is 6.2, up, and we're going to go in, if we get a motion, to go into executive session. That's what we're going to do.
After we.
After what?
After we talk, discuss it.
Or you want to open, you want to have a discussion?
Where's Neil? I thought, I thought we were going to discuss it first.
No, in executive session.
No, okay. Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion for executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we could modify that, make sure it's only 10 minutes. I don't want the people to wait who are sitting there. I'll be back in 10 minutes. I know it's fair time to form, but you know.
I think 15 minutes would be closer to it.
15 minutes? Okay. Everybody accept.
7:30, we're back.
Accept that amendment, 15 minutes. Okay. All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Opposed. We'll be back in 15 minutes. Okay.
We can move up for people that need us to.
We're going to resume item number 6.2, School Transportation Services Bit Award.
What about consent agenda?
You need to take it up. We're still on it. I need a motion for.
No, you can take consent agenda, you just need to table.
I thought we'd go back to the.
No, we're still on.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to table the awarding of the School Transportation Services Bit Award.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, now we go to approval, consent agenda, approval of minutes, and personnel action.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody wish to extract anything from the consent calendar?
No, no extraction, Mr. Chairman. Just want to make sure that the leave of absence is a first-year only, the leave without pay. Is that a first-year only? Do we know that?
It is.
Because we only allow one year, not a second year.
Does anybody know?
Well, it's going to assumption that it is. If it isn't, then.
Which one are you talking about?
The leave of absence without pay.
Like what he says, one year only.
Yeah, but is it first time, second time? You know, it's, you only allow one by contract.
Is it recommended? It is recommended. Wouldn't have been recommended if it were not.
Okay, all in favor of consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We go to action items, Health School, Extended School Age Child Care Program, Bit Award.
Mr. Chairman, I move, I move the recommendation to award the bid to the Newport Family and Child Care Program.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this the same company that we presently have?
We don't have one.
We don't have one.
We don't have one.
Who's doing all my schools right now?
No one. We have no after-school.
Well, YMCA, YMCA is the soft programming.
The Y is currently running the program at Cranston Calvert.
We are, and.
The Y is running Cranston Calvert.
And doesn't, the COCE does the others?
That's the regular after-school program, Title I.
You guys want to help us? Do you know the answers to the question?
Yes, the family center takes care of your elementary school after school, Cranston Calvert, Sullivan, Underwood, and I don't believe they have a program at Calso. Their white group, they didn't make a, don't quote me on that.
This is, Mr. Chairman? Yes.
This is the extended, this is the extended care program. This is after, after they finish their programming, and the YMCA has been doing that. They had interviews with both of them. I was actually at the interviews, and based on the criteria that we used and based on the interviews, the recommendation that you have before you is what the interview committee was recommending.
Six to one vote.
So the answer to Mr. Leary's question is the YMCA's been doing the extended, that's 4 o'clock on, and the other group had been doing it up until 4 o'clock. Now what's going to happen is that group will be doing it to 4 o'clock and beyond. It will be all one group.
And what is our cost?
It doesn't cost us anything. It's not our cost.
So just looking at that, just looking at that committee, there are seven people, three of them are school department employees. Who's the one that voted no? You don't know?
I don't know.
You're underneath, you're on the list yet.
I wasn't, I don't know who voted no.
I don't know. Is that something that should be discussed publicly?
Well, it's a six to one.
People vote in recommendations.
Well, I mean, maybe, first of all, it shouldn't be voted.
Well, I don't think we have that information. Okay, there's been a motion to, and seconded to approve, the Extended Age Child Care Program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
6.2 has been handled already, so we'll move on to 6.3, I presume. Moving Location Service Bit Award. Anybody here want, do you have any information on that?
Paul might want to speak to that. I would move the recommendation, just to get the discussion going.
Get it on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Good evening. You have before you the bid for the moving relocation services of the four existing elementary schools into the new Pell School coming this summer. There were three bidders for this work, Astro of New England, company Sterling Moving out of Cranston, Invito Express out of Johnston. One of the bidders was determined to be a non-responsive bidder to the complete bid package and was, his bid was not moved forward. The low bidder is Astro of New England, $47,828.50, and the recommendation before you is for the award to them of that contract. They are the company that moved the Sullivan School contents to the triplet location, and we are quite pleased with their work. They do a lot of work in moving in the educational fields.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Paul?
When do we start moving?
In your packet, we have a window circled of August 5th to August 23rd, and of course, we're hoping that that gets adjusted forward and not backwards. So we're quite sure it will not, it won't go backwards, but we're hoping that it could be bumped up a week or so, depending on, you know, the construction schedule.
Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. A two-ton, stay right there, Paul.
Yes.
Duckless HVAC unit at Thompson.
This one is, we've put a lot of equipment. There's a data closet in the basement of Thompson. It's in the same general area, has the boiler room, and we have a lot of telephone equipment. We have a lot of computer equipment since we've done the transition to wireless in the building. We have more and more capabilities of needs of cooling that space, so that's what this award is going to do. We're going to put a split AC unit in there with the works in that room, in the condenser unit, hanging in the alleyway outside. We have another one of these we have put in within the last five years at Thompson in the similar situation. If you look at the new Pell School, most of the data closets contain a similar unit to make sure that those rooms are cool because that equipment needs that type of environment. The low bidder on that award is Eagle Design Corporation of Middletown, and the low bid price is $10,465. Eagle Design also is the city of Newport's on-call plumbing contractor, so they're quite familiar with the building.
I'll entertain a motion for.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
This was, this particular bit of equipment was not something that would have been anticipated then when Thompson was redone.
Well, originally, there was not that volume of equipment in that room, but through the years, you know, technology changes and more and more things have been added, so.
Just make sure everything is humming along smoothly.
Yeah, the stuff heats up quickly, and you want to make sure it's operating properly.
See, no other hands? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stay there, Paul. Hell School, approval of change orders.
6.5, Mr. Chairman, gym floor.
Oh, the gym floor.
Gym floor.
Gym floor.
Oh, I missed the gym floor. Where'd that go?
Rogers High School gym floor, Sandy, and refinish.
6.1, I'm sorry.
6.5.
Yeah, okay. Anybody know, you know that one, Paul?
Yeah, I have that one. I just got it mixed up in my.
So do I.
My package here. There was three bidders also for that work. O'Keefe Flooring is the low bidder, or Sullivan Flooring was the second bidder, and Kembo Flooring in Rhode Island was the high bidder. It's recommended we go with O'Keefe Flooring. I don't want to take up too much time looking through trying to grab parts of my package, but they had great recommendations from, they do a lot of work in the area. I called the athletic director at the Naval Naps, and he gave them a great recommendation. Part of this recoating and refinishing to the gym floor is being done, hasn't been done in 18 years, so it's more than time, but there was some damage from Hurricane Sandy that resulted, to a little bit of damage in the gym floor, so the Rhode Island Local Trust is contributing 25% to that work, so I don't have the exact price in 20, it's $20,000 and change, and they'll be coming off $5,000 or so to bring that down to $15,000 and change.
Paul, what was, was there a leak in the ceiling or a wind blow?
The rubber roofing system actually blew right off the top of the gym. In a sense.
It's been replaced.
It's been replaced.
Did you have a motion?
No, I haven't.
I move, we accept the recommendation for O'Keefe Building Maintenance.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'll try the other one. Hell School, approval of change orders.
Now, do you have them?
The change order?
Yeah.
You deal with me for two secs.
Yeah.
Change order number one is in the amount of, and I'm just going to rewrite off of Mr. Farah's memo, we sent a memo out to discuss these things. The cost of $55,448 is comprised of numerous items related to the custom fitting of a large rooftop heating unit. To accommodate this unit, changes to the structural steel and its screening detail were required. This work allowed for equipment installation within the project's critical schedule. That's the first change order, and it's a sum of $55,448. The second cost of $21,332 was related to a custom window color that was available in a superior finish coating. In consideration to the climate of salty air and the custom color, the approval of the cost was recommended. And the third change order is the cost of $28,845 is based on security changes. This change included adding cameras and changes to door hardware and related security equipment. The total for these change orders is $105,625.
And that's within budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I need a motion?
I move the awarding of the change orders.
Second.
Seeing no hands, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Item 6.7, School Committee Payment of Pell Bond. Mr. Leary, you're the one who seemed to ask this.
Yeah, I, I, I wrote down my note here, so I'm sorry, I lost it too, for somebody else. I just think personally that the voters have to know, and I know Dr. Ambrosi's reducing it by 852,000, I forgot the number, I'm sorry, I wrote it down on a paper, must put it in the folder. I just think the voters have to know that we're serious about that, and this is not a vote to, you know, two years now, they're going to say, oh, you know, we're used to having 180 kids in our school, we need another vice principal. Two years now, we need another custodian, you know, three years now, we need another nurse, you know. You promise the voters these savings. This would be real savings if you would do it by deducting it from your maintenance effort from the city. So we send a letter to the city asking to reduce it by $852,000 on maintenance of effort, and that'd be a one-time thing, and there'd be no other message sent about the bond payment. We'd be done with it in time. So I guess that'd be my motion, that we, that we reduce our maintenance effort to the city by $852,000 to show that we are serious about this, and it's not going to be looked at in the other way.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Mrs. Boland?
So, first of all, I don't know, Bobby, I wonder what would happen if the state, if we tried to reduce our maintenance of effort, but then couldn't make our, you know, the pay, you know, like, in order to do that, we'd have to be able to say that we could balance our budget. I don't think we're at the point yet where we could balance our budget and ask for, you know, a maintenance, reduction, the maintenance of effort. So I don't even think the state would allow it. I mean, what do you, anybody?
I don't know until you ask them, I guess, or to the city. The city would have to ask them directly because they're the ones that, the maintenance effort, this would be just to notify the city of such, you know.
Mrs. Gaines?
When I think over the last 10 years, we have had a level-funded budget, which is the equivalent of being reduced by over $1 million. I can't see further reducing the maintenance of effort. The $800,000 that we talked about savings is actually a cost avoidance. Had we not combined the four schools, our budget would have included another 800, I think it was 70-something thousand dollars. That is not money in hand. And at this point, here we are trying to balance a budget. We don't have any money to give to the city unless we want to close down programs or if we want to try to charge for pay-to-play. If you're going to disperse money, you got to have a replacement for it, and I don't see the replacement.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Now, I, just to say to the city that we're going to reduce by, say, 850,000, and that we can live without that, when we've been saying that we are, it's going to be really tough with the budget that we're proposing at this time. Personally, I think that is irresponsible. I disrespectfully cannot agree with this.
Yes, let me take Ms. Phelan first.
When this bond, when the bond was sold, it basically, as I understood it, that the savings would be put toward the bond, if you want one form or another. Right now, we're using the increase in cost on the school side to be offset by what we did save, the $800,000, plus we saved another $300,000 because of the larger class size. It just, I still haven't found out why we have a free, it would be, if we didn't have this extra money, our deficit would have been originally at $3.1 million approximately. And the answers I've gotten so far, to me, haven't added up. And also, if we did have this thing coming down the line, we should have been thinking about this last year or the year before because we did have money from the federal government. We knew it wasn't going to exist, and we just spent it on salaries. If we had spent it on, say, if we could have, on something that we would own for years, but for one or two years, that didn't make it. I think we have an obligation to the voters that voted for this with the understanding that the bond would be paid back by the savings, and right now, I don't see it.
Mrs. Phelan, Ms. Ball?
Yeah, Mr. Leary, I mean, how would you feel if we put this off to see if we can balance our budget? Because I don't think it's, like, prudent to do it right now when we don't have a balanced budget. I would think that we should put this off. If we're able to balance our budget and still have money left over, then I'm all for it, you know, but right now, I'm just a little worried that it's not going to, when you can't balance your budget, you can't really be asking this, you know, the state for a reduction in effort.
I'm fine with that. What I would request for Wendy, that you take Dr. Ambrosi's money that he's saving from the Pell School and Mr. Phelan's list of staff that are presently in elementary schools, and attach them to the minutes. So going forward, three or four or five years from now, somebody can look and say, oh, you know, they really was here instead of just looking at one little note. So if we could do that, Wendy, is that possible?
My personal content comment.
I don't understand what you're asking her to do.
Well, the minutes are going to say that it was tabled, whatever happens, it may never come back up, okay? So somebody four years now will look up and say, oh, we don't even know what happened. All I want to do is take a copy of Dr. Ambrosi's proposal for the $852,000 savings, okay, and the proposal of all the elementary staff that we presently have, and those two would be attached to this minutes of six point seven, so that they, people can actually see what was on both sides here. Is that not a problem, is it, Wendy?
Well, I have the both pieces of...
Right, same, it's not like you just make sure, just make sure it's part of six point seven, whatever goes on.
My personal reaction is we're playing around with state law. First of all, maintenance of effort is very clear, the state laws as to how it's to be handled, and I don't think we should be making, over, trumping state law at this point. And the other is, let me take Bob's question first, let me think about the second half of my question.
I just want to know what Mr. Leary's motion is. I don't know what it is.
Well, I guess we're going to table it. Mrs. Gaines, will you make a motion to table it?
No. I'm going to vote against it.
Yeah.
I would move that we table, you know, table it to a time, you know, defer it till a time when we figure out if we can really balance that budget and have it left over.
I'll second it.
Second, all right, that's, so that's an, so we have to make it so it's...
You have a motion on the floor.
Right, but we're going to amend the motion to, or to table it, I guess.
Amend to be tabled.
And that has to be a...
You can't amend a motion to be tabled.
No, 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 we're going to table the motion. We're going to table the motion.
Vote for it will mean that this will continue, a vote no means it's dead. All in favor?
Of tabling it, of what?
Yes, table.
Motion.
Of tabling it?
Yep.
Right, Bobby.
Go opposed, the motion? Okay, we go back to the original motion.
So table is opposed.
Yes. Myself and Bob.
There were four votes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think, I think what would happen, Mr. Leary, if he withdrew his original motion, and then we make a motion to table this item, we can bring it back up.
So, so moved. I look it up.
What are you moving?
Withdrawing my original, withdrawing my original motion.
You can withdraw it.
You just withdraw it.
Yep.
And then somebody can make a motion to table this item, and then we can bring it back up at another time.
Correct.
Do you withdraw your motion?
I just did.
Okay, so he's withdrawing it, and that's...
Second, I second it.
Second, okay.
All in favor?
Withdrawing it?
No, no, withdrawing, he's withdrawn.
Yep.
Now he's made, somebody's made a motion to bring this back to table.
Just making a motion to table this item.
Yep.
Well, wait a minute, are you withdrawing it, or are you withdrawing?
He withdrew his motion.
It's gone.
It's gone, we can just...
He withdrew his motion, so then...
Yeah, withdrew his original motion.
Yes. Go ahead.
And so now, if somebody makes a motion to table this item...
Correct.
And it passes, we can bring it back up at another time.
I don't think we have to...
Okay, so discussion, tabling is...
Well, I think we need to go vice then, Mr....
Oh, no, 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 no.
Because if it fails, I want to bring it back up next month.
You can.
If he withdraws his motion, I don't think we have to, there...
You can bring it back in time.
I have a motion to table, is there a second to the motion to table? If not, we'll let it die.
No, he just withdrew it, that's all.
He just withdrew it.
Table the discussion.
Oh, table the discussion, okay, well, that's great.
Make a motion to table.
It wasn't, that didn't get a second.
He just withdrew his motion.
And there was no second to the motion to table?
The motion was not seconded.
So it went down.
So now, we're on to policy. It's Dr. Flowers, handle this issue. Dr. Flowers?
Policy.
Did we, huh? Did you...
It's the second reading.
Six point eight, are we on?
Six point eight.
Where is the six?
Six point eight's the...
That's not right.
Charlie, I have the history behind this one.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Approval of food services, one-year renewal contract, okay?
Okay, so we entered into a five, let's see, a three-year agreement with Chartwells, and every year, it's got a renewal. So basically, this is our second year with the renewal. The difference between, if you saw the contracts, we didn't see them compared, but basically, they're exactly the same as it was last year. The guaranteed return is going to be zero. So that means that they're saying to us that we will not have a deficit in, you know, on our side, and that that's what they're guaranteeing us. This is the same thing we had last year. They also said that if, in fact, they do, we run in the hole, they cover the first $30,000 of going in the hole. So we're really protected on this in terms of, this year, right now, they're running, they're running in the hole right about $5,000, but it's not the end of the year yet. So they're hoping to come out even, and so there's really no harm to us at all in this contract, and, so I would, you know...
So I'll take your mo, I'll assume that you're making the motion.
Definitely in favor of it, and I will make a motion to approve the contract for another year.
Further discussion on the issue? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, can I get on here for the policies?
Okay, mine just froze up here. Do you have the policies? Okay, policy number 2460, Newport Public Schools. This is the second reading and adoption of the pest management policy.
I move the adoption of pest management policy.
Second.
Does that include Mr. Carlin's cat? Does that include Mr. Carlin's cat?
Yes, it does.
Okay, if it moved as second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then, policy number 3291, the second reading and adoption of the business procurement policy of minimizing mercury exposure.
So moved.
Second. Mrs...
Who seconded it?
Mrs. Gaines?
It was Dr. Flowers.
I seconded it.
Was there another one that had to do with the building?
Just these two here?
Those two policy changes had been... Oh, did you vote yet?
No, we haven't voted yet.
And these were, these were required.
We're still in discussion of the second policy change. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
By way of explanation, I just wanted to say that those were policies that were required for the new building, for us to comply with our LEED's certification, which will give us an additional 2% on the bond, the state contributions. So we are now at maximum of 44%, which means we are as green as we can get.
Now, if I'm on the right place, it's presentation by the Newport Community School.
Yes, you're at the right place.
We have information in front of you in the packet provided by... Good evening, everybody. How are you tonight?
Good.
Great. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak about the Newport Community School. I would, before I start, like to point out that there is a packet in front of you, as Wendy pointed out, that has some information about the community school. What we're covering tonight is just merely a snapshot of our programming. As you know, the community school is a highly comprehensive and extensive program, and with 10 minutes, we cannot cover everything. So at your leisure, please feel free. Also, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize our chief operations officer, who's also here with us tonight, Patrick Shea. We're going to start to talk to you about, just a few things. We're going to talk about summer, we're going to talk about our NCS Connects program, and we're also going to talk about Adel Ed. So starting with summer, in a very short time span between July and August, Newport Community School operates four summer learning programs. And of the four programs, I'll start with the Summer Success Program, which is dedicated for our middle school students. It is operated on Salve's campus. The university hosts us, very generous and kind support to house our program. The program operates four weeks, five days a week, all day, from eight to three. The program's capped at 60 kids, and we do take kids that are incoming grade five, incoming grade eight. The program itself is broken down into two smaller learning communities, one dedicated to math, science, and technology, the other dedicated to ELA, the arts and humanities. In between the course of the four weeks, kids move between 16 programs. All the programs are designed by teachers and community-based organizations. We use a UVD design, and they are tied to common core. Students also participate on all-day field trips. Yes, ma'am?
On that program, how do kids get chosen for it? Or do they apply for it?
It is done on a referral basis.
Referral, so those are needy children that may need extra help?
Absolutely, there is a criteria the students must meet to be referred into that program.
Extension of that, is, are there students who are trying to make up credits?
Not in this program, no, no, sir. Students participate in all-day field trips on Friday, which all tied back to their learning communities. So, for example, Boston, a trip to Boston Museum of Science, JFK Library, things of that nature. Also, too, and what will be a common theme throughout all community school programming are two essential elements. Number one, all our programs are student-centered. Number two, we make a very conscious effort to ensure that our parents participate and understand that we are here to help them, we are here to work with them, and really want to foster a relationship so they, in turn, can foster that relationship of being part of the teaching and learning process with their students. So with this particular program, one tactic that we do use to promote that is that we do host, just before the program starts, on Salve's campus, a cookout for families, for them, number one, to see where their student is going to be participating in programming for the next four weeks, understand where they are in case there's emergency, they need to come pick them up, but also, two, to meet the teachers, understand what the schedule is, and if they have any questions for our staff, whatever, they can have those answers at that time. Also, a new incentive that we're putting in place this year, again, to promote parent involvement, is called Pack for Success. On the first day of the program this year, every student participating in the program will receive a backpack. In that backpack will be a student's summer agenda. That agenda will be used as a communication piece between the teachers, our staff, and the families. Also, every single night in that backpack, along with that agenda, will come some either information for the parent about various things that are going on in the community, tips, activities they can do with their student over the course of the summer, things of that nature. So we'll be also instituting that this year, that's something new.
Tracy, can I?
Yes, sir.
Is there any incentive for these kids other than they want to learn and their parents want them to learn to come to this program?
No incentive. It is, if you are recommended, you are sent an invitation for the program, and if you sign up for the program, you go to the program.
That's really remarkable because it's summertime...
At no cost to the parent.
You've had very good attendance, I understand, and be commended.
Absolutely, absolutely. The second summer program I'd like to talk about is our academic recovery program. Obviously, that is for our Rogers High School students. It operates five weeks, four days a week, from nine to 12. The program, on average, throughout the past couple summers that we've been running, averages about 120 students. The purpose of the program is to provide students with the opportunity to receive multiple ways of demonstrating that their proficiency in content area and also in benchmark assessment. The program is tailored to the individual needs of the students, meaning that students are coming into this program, there are specific things that they have to do, whether it's in the content area or benchmark assessment area, they have to do it. They work with the teachers on getting that accomplished over the course of the five weeks. Some students do it more than, less than five weeks, some students do it right up to the fifth week, but it is a pretty individualized, specialized program. The NCS staff communicates frequently with parents and family members on information about the student's progress. Ms. Gaines?
Students come to you, then, with a prescription, so to speak.
Absolutely. Every student has a folder first day, walking in, with a prescription of what they absolutely have to accomplish in that five weeks. And like I said, some students, they could be in and out in a week, some students are there for the five weeks.
How do you, how do you then, if you don't know until they walk in the door, how do you know what kind of teacher, what area?
We do, we have a sense. We do know, with our, with our communication with Rogers and the administration and the Guidance Council at Rogers and our, and our staff members there. Don't forget, we are all school-based, our staff members. We do have a very good sense of what types of teachers we need, how many, you know, do we need more math, do we need more English? We do have a sense.
Good.
We do, absolutely. And again, that communication back and forth with the parent that we have very, very frequently with the parents during the course of this process, because it is very individualized, is really, again, to encourage the families to understand that they are part of this process, that they need to be an active partner, they are part of this team. There's the schools, there's your community-based organization, like the community school and them, that are playing this special part in the success of a student. The last two summer programs are both summer transition programs. One is the Moving On Up program, which is grade five to grade six transition program, and Rogers 101, grade eight to grade nine transition program. Each program runs the last two weeks of August, right, so everything's fresh in everyone's mind before they start school. On average, the Moving On Up program has approximately 45 students that attend, the Rogers 101 program has upwards to 90 students that attend. So we definitely get a very, very high volume of kids that are coming into the high school, which is great. The goal of each program is to improve and maintain academic knowledge and skills, to increase the social and emotional support, specifically around goal-setting, time management, organization, outreach to parents and families to encourage ongoing, again, that communication piece with our families, to get them involved and continue them to be involved in their students' education. As part of the Rogers 101 program, we also host on each Friday of the two-week program, a cookout where we invite the parents to come in. It's done during the lunchtime, of the students' lunchtime. So it gives the parents the opportunity, before new student orientation even happens here at Rogers High School in August, it gives them the opportunity to come in, to talk with some of the teachers, meet the administration, other key people that work for Rogers High School, have any questions, any angst, whatever, they can sit, they get to know some folks, which I think helps, especially if it's your first student going to high school, I think it helps a lot. Also, the Moving On Up program, another way that we engage parents in that is we do Friday field trips with that program. Also, we always invite parents or family members to come on those trips, so they are engaged in that learning process right by side with their student. And that's been, that's been... And that's been, that's been highly successful, and the parents really do look forward to that. Moving away from summer, I'd like to talk about--
Let me just comment about transition. More, you know, I didn't know much when I first started here, because I was not in the education, but the last six years, I've read a lot, and transition from, say, kindergarten to first grade, or fifth grade to sixth, or sixth to, say, whatever, transition, and then the ninth, eighth to ninth, are very important. And a lot of places, they're not good transitions, and so I, again, commend you for what you've done.
Thank you. I will say that the community school does spend a lot of time on transition. We do serve as a model for the state. There are actually other programs that have come down and looked, because some transition programs, especially for high schools, tend to be like one or two days, and it's normally like the first day of school, probably not the best time. But, so we do spend a lot of time with transition. Ms. Bowlen?
Yeah, first of all, I want to commend you. That program last year, my son did it, it was, it was excellent. It was really run well.
Thank you.
How much support, like financial support, do you get from Newport Public Schools for those summer programs?
Depends on the year. Right now, we don't have a commitment from the district, because our budgets, you're obviously engaged in your budget process. Last year, I believe it was approximately $7,000. The year before, it was nothing, and the year before that, it was nothing.
So basically, you're running our summer school program at the high school?
We absolutely are, yes.
So we've gotten, and you do that without us having to--
I will say that we do do it with some support from the district.
You do.
But I can tell you collectively, all four programs cost upwards to over $200,000. And of that, probably, I would say, you know, 75, maybe less, come from the district. And without that support, we cannot run these programs.
$75,000? Comes from the district.
And it probably costs well over $200,000 to run.
That's amazing. We used to have to do all that ourselves.
I just, may I? Tracy is a fantastic grant writer. And a grant locator. And without those skills, we have no community school. Because the district does not, does not support it enough.
So moving on to the NCS Connects program. NCS Connects, since its inception in 2009, was an expansion program and has become a highly effective signature piece for our organization. The program provides increased access to health, wellness, and family support services, again encouraging our families to understand that they are an important part of the student's success. The program addresses barriers to learning associated to health, wellness, and inadequate family involvement, or inadequate support services for health and wellness. Not only does the program serve as a resource network to help families in need, and kind of pointing out different places in the community that they can get that assistance, we also, school-based, have a basic needs program, providing winter coats, clothing, hygiene products, again, offered to both Thompson and Rogers students. We have home visitation, which Patrick does a lot of the home visitation for us at this point, and does an excellent job at that. We also have a school-based food pantry, which is one of four piloted programs in partnership with Rhode Island Community School, Rhode Island Food Bank. So that, that's been a very much-needed service in the past two years. The volume of referral that we're getting for basic need in food is incredible, and has been incredible in the past five years. And that is the reason for us, we just rolled that out in January. We were kind of piecemealing it together on our own with different funding sources, but now with the help from the community food bank, it's been, it's been great. It's been extremely helpful. We also do some school-based health clinics, basically dental and vision, in partnership with other community-based organizations, such as the Lions Club and MCAT. Students also are offered the opportunity to participate in social skills programming related to character development and mentoring, as well as extended learning opportunities related to health and wellness, yoga, martial arts, things of those natures. Adult education. As you all know, in January of 2010, the adult education program merged to the Newport Community School. This year, the adult ed program has served 755 students in a variety of program opportunities, anywhere from basic adult ed to vocational programs, certified nursing, pipe fitting, electrical, what have you. This year, six Rogers High School students have attended the diploma-plus program. Three Rogers High School students and two adults will earn their Rogers High School diploma this year. The AILC graduation is June 10th. I'm sure that you all received and have RSVP'd your attendance for that. Currently, the adult ed program also serves 18, 16, and 17-year-old Rogers High School students who are on an approved alternative learning plan due to the changes in the state's compulsory attendance law. Six of those 18 students on the alternative plan have earned their GED so far, which is a great accomplishment for them. It is also anticipated that several others, that we're in testing month of May, will also complete their GED. But that are 18 Rogers High School students that are attending the adult learning program rather than attending Rogers High School. So, in closing, I'd just like to, again, thank you all. And in just building off some of your comments, I think we're all in agreement that a school can't operate in isolation, that it does need community support, it does need its families, and the community school is that vehicle that provides $1.3 million worth of services, support services, to Newport Public School students, and only Newport Public School students. So we are, we do value that partnership that we do have with the district, and we hope that that's the mutual feeling, and that we all embrace that partnership moving forward. As you all know, the community school's been in existence now for 11 years. We will be ending that 11th year and starting a 12th year in July 1st. So, also, too, when, beginning of June, we're gonna be conducting some different coffee hours and some other midday snack hours, if you will, where we really would like you folks to come in. We really do want you to see our programming in action, where our kids are engaged. Yeah, sure, everything, and I appreciate your comments about, you know, that, how we should be commended, and we are very proud of our program. As you know, we were one of 15 programs in the country picked to be studied. That report is coming out very, very soon, and then will be distributed down to 10,000 other programs in the country. That's quite a big accomplishment for a very small state in a very small community. So it's great to see all the stuff on paper. It's another thing to see it in action and see how engaged our kids are, how much they love our programming, how much they appreciate it, because it is student-centered, and our students will come first. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
I have a question before you leave. Can I just, so, right now, your program is centered, where do you have your headquarters right now?
Our main office is still considered 55 Broadway, which is Thompson Middle School. That is where also my office is located.
Okay, all right, and you're able to work out of there, okay.
Absolutely. And it is very important and essential that we do work out of that as a school-based organization.
Dr. Schumaker?
Yes, please.
Showing up at Thompson once a week to, with the mentoring program--
And an excellent job you do, Dr. Flowers.
And the young lady that, who I meet, I started working with him when she was in second grade, and she's finishing up sixth grade now. So this is, and you can just see the whole attitude, and when you know this, something's not quite right. And that happens, hey, you know, these kids are in middle school, and this happens, you know, Tracy and Pat really get into it, and we exchange confidential, of course, but we'll exchange just some points of view and find out how to help the youngster, and I know it happens with all of the others, but it's an excellent program, and it meshes very nicely with the school, with Thompson also. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'm on 7.3, super, no.
7.2.
7.2. Healthcare of retirees. Mr. Leary, you're--
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I would like to, I guess, put it on the agenda next night for action, but just talk about tonight, that we send a letter to the city council requesting that they open up talks with all retirees, you know, police, fire, municipal workers, and school employees. It's a, it's a big amount of money, and I think it's something that we need to sit at the table with them. I know other towns have had success with it. I'm not saying that we would, it probably won't, but I think it's something they gotta start discussing. When, when you're talking here of school budgets, and I know we're talking about science teachers, and we're talking earlier here Rogers, you're saying that this year alone, the city has put $1.9 million into its unfunded liability payment. That's over 2.5% tax increase, right there. That's for nothing, that's for no roads, no nothing, that's just for retirees going out. We can't continue that, and that's what's happening in Providence, East Providence, and West Bork, and you name the cities, and the Central Falls went down. So I think it can't be an isolated conversation that we're gonna just have with our retirees. I think it needs to be a whole city conversation. And ours alone, 10% of our budget goes to retirees, 10% goes just for retirees, you know? So it's a lot of money. I think it's something that we need to, I will ask to be put on the agenda for action for next month, and just have some conversation anybody now.
May I?
Yes, Mrs. Gaines?
We have a budget meeting with the city council, I think June 30th, and I think that would be an appropriate topic to bring up there. Everybody will be at the table. Rather than have us send a letter, they don't like us telling them what to do. And I think if we simply discussed it with them, rather than sending a letter, we might have more input and, you know, discussion about that issue. I don't think we need to send a letter, we can talk face-to-face.
Well, why don't you put it on the agenda, because I'm not--
Yeah, it's everybody.
Ms. Flowers?
It's the school committee and the council meeting together.
Oh, the budget, I thought--
Dr. Flowers?
No. That's what it's saying about the liaison.
No, no, no. I'm skip the liaison, go right to the council.
I had this conversation with the mayor today. He said he felt uncomfortable doing it because we hadn't collaborated with--
Can't hear you, Charlie.
He felt uncomfortable, he, they got a huge problem, too. I mean, they have a huge unfunded liability with retirees. They have two. They have both a pension and a healthcare. We only have healthcare. He sort of supported it, but he threw out a few, he said, until you guys make a deal as far as with grounds and finance officer, he didn't feel comfortable in supporting it. But I think they realize now that they are in deep trouble financially, and they need some help, so I support what Bobby Leary is suggesting.
So I have no problem, Dr. Schumaker, bringing up at the budget meeting, if that's what you wanna do. I just thought I'd be formal, either way, I mean, I can make it that way, maybe do a formal thing afterwards, you know?
I think if you do it that way, Bobby, it's, it's in the public, it's out there.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Because they can lose the letter.
So we'll take, we'll put that on the agenda for the combined meeting.
Budget, yeah.
Okay. Superintendent's search process. Last night, the school committee took part in one of two focus groups. Everybody in the school committee was there and participated, and I think we had some great ideas exchanged. Now, I don't know, it was that previous one with the teachers, I have no idea what was said at that one, and we're not supposed to know what it is, but at least the process is in place. There's four other focus groups that will be occurring in the next week or so. Then, the NESTEC individual will then sit down, put this all together in terms of a profile. In July, we'll start a process called the Community Screening Committee. Now, this is a little bit different. In the focus groups, anybody could show up, who's, say, a teacher could show up at the teacher group, or parents could show up, parents. In the community group, there's going to be slots, slate, slots for individual organizations, like the PTO, teachers, administrations, and so, there's a very specific process, which has been, which has been distributed in a letter to your parent organizations, to PTOs, to, to TAN, et cetera. So if you don't have, call them, they should have the letter. But it's also been in the daily news, so we hope you participate, because we have 17 slots, and we hope to fill all those slots representing various portions of the community. That is it. Business Office Operations. Are you prepared to talk about that?
Yeah, I guess that's me.
Oh, you again?
It's, I noticed Jack's, Dr. Brogge's comment here, it says, "It's my belief that the transportation and food service should be taken over by property services by Paul Fagan." I think he has, has to put that as an action item for us at some point. And I think maybe that, I don't wanna put Joan on the spot, but seeing as she's here, maybe she needs to come to the microphone and explain how she feels. I'd like you to go into that.
What about Paul?
Well, Paul too, we'll get to Paul.
Well, that was the offer that was made to me, was that, could I, could I ever catch up if anything was removed in my transportation and food service? They take, transportation doesn't take much time, other than the very beginning of the school year. The food service takes a lot of time. There's a lot of ride reports that have to be done. There was a federal audit this year of the food service, and because of sequestration, the auditors did not come here. We had to prepare all the information, I had to prepare all the information to send, documentation for the last three years. It probably took well over 200 hours. So if you're wondering why I'm so far behind, things take time.
So I've been looking for a accountant for the last two or three months, it's been hashed over and back and forth, so you're gonna say, if this goes forward, you don't need that accountant?
No, I wouldn't say that.
Are you dictating, or are you--
I'm asking a question, that's why I want to-- So you're still looking to get a count?
Yes. We need an accountant in that office. One person cannot carry that load.
Gaines, you and I fully agree, I totally agree with you here, you know? I've put it on the agenda for six months now.
And I, oh, I will have the floor.
Hey, do.
You've taken the floor.
I just wonder, I, I'm not questioning Paul's ability when it comes to finance, but with the degree of financial reporting that has to be done for food service, I just wonder if that's a good move. And doing that in lieu of getting an accountant doesn't make sense to me. Now, I had a conversation with Laura Citron this week, or was it last week, it might have been last Friday. There had been some mention that people who had applied for jobs at the city in finance and were not hired, that there was a list of names of fully qualified people, and somehow either we didn't respond to the city, or the city didn't respond to us, and the information never got transferred here. So I just butted in, and I called Laura. Laura then called Michael Cory, Cory?
Cory.
Cory? Who is their HR person. And he is contacting those people and getting their permission to send their documents to our HR person, so that you then can look through those documents and maybe interview someone who wants a job, did not, was not hired by the city, but is fully qualified. So it's happening now. And if I butted in and I'm micromanaging, so be it. But it's just been too long getting somebody in that office to help.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Phil?
I think since Joan's come in the business office, we're getting information, and correct information as much as she can get.
Yeah.
The thing is, we've needed help in that office for years, and we've ignored it, and we can't just move some of the things somewhere else. She needs the help, and we need someone that knows what they're doing, so that she can supervise them and get the information to everybody, to us and to the city. And like I said, it's been too long, probably over two years, and it has to end, and we've gotta really make a decision. I think Mrs. Gaines' idea is great.
Thank you. I might need your support.
Oh, you got it.
Joan, thanks for all you've done so far, and thanks for coming tonight.
I have one question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
When would we, I mean, are we--
Right now, you asked for the budget meeting for Thursday to have the encumbrance report, and not including payroll, there are 700 accounts that have to be analyzed and corrected because the UCOA budget did not line up with the way it was budgeted, the UCOA process doesn't line up with the way it was budgeted last year. And when I started, we were posting things to the wrong account. I'm trying my best.
Yeah, I know, I'm sure you are, so it's, it's not really.
And that's only in Fund 10. There's Fund, all the Fund 24, all the local grants, all the UCOA numbers that were set up, all the funds were improper. They just, someone here just took numbers, they didn't actually use the Ride UCOA account strings.
Joan.
We're in the process.
Joan, don't give up on us, please.
Several of us were at the, at the Rhode Island Association School Committee meeting 10 days ago, and Tim Ryan, who was an ex-superintendent, was representing the Superintendent's Association, and he came up and he said, you know, we have come to the, the superintendents have come to the conclusion, there just aren't a lot of financial people out there who are comfortable with UCOA. And he is suggesting perhaps regionalizing a person who is comfortable with UCOA, say, somebody on the island who could service several of the schools on that particular issue with supplemental people, perhaps who aren't as highly trained. Does that make any sense?
That would make sense if you could find a person.
Okay.
That's it, just will put it together.
Again, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm told I'm on schedule, it's the Pell Building Committee, Mrs. Gaines, update.
We're on schedule. If you've taken a drive-by, you'll see that they have started the landscaping now. Paul, can I have that information I just gave you? I'm sure you are aware, there have been some issues around with the neighbors. Thank you. One neighbor in particular who has had some drainage issues, but there is a discussion among our experts as to whose water is invading her yard. Is it our water, or the water coming down Dudley Avenue? So, I have this report in hand that answers that question. I'm not going to share it all with you tonight because this might very well end up in litigation, and I'm not going to tip our hand. But one of the things that I can tell you in an email from Laura, our architect, we're all very sensitive to the neighbors and the level of attention the issue has received. Be aware that, that the improvements on the property will require additional stabilization measures, but while this is not ideal, there will be an improvement to the drainage problem once our construction is complete. During the construction, we've had torrential rains, we've had a hurricane, and all of those things have been, have been like occasional storms, something that would happen one year in, one in five years, or one in 10 years. And there was one storm that was listed as one, once in 25 years, you would get that kind of rain, that much water in that short a time. Everybody in Newport was flooded. So, we are comfortable with the fact that there will be an improvement to the neighbor's water problem once we finish, but during construction, everybody is kind of inconvenienced. So, we are going to be fair to the neighbors, but we cannot enhance the property of 15 or 20 neighbors at the expense of the taxpayers. So, we will be fair, and we hope that they will be fair in their assessments of what they think we owe them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The water, I think everybody can agree, was always coming from Middletown, even before the construction was built. So, that's a non-issue. The thing is, when you have a new building, it's larger, it's taller, so the water could be redirected until, okay, when the building's finished and it goes back to the way it was, fine, but if it doesn't, that would mean, but what we built on, the size and what we prepared wasn't done, wasn't properly done. I think we have to look at that because they've always had water, but not to the point that they've had now. So, this, I'm just hoping that we keep our minds open so that when everything's done and things settle down, and if the water was the same as it is now, then we've got to look and see if there's a solution somewhere.
It can't be, Tom, if you are aware of the storage, the amount of water storage we have on that property.
Huge.
All of the, the water from the building is tied in to downspouts that are tied in to a drainage system. No water leaves that property. It all stays on the property.
Is it the water that's just coming onto the property, or the water that was coming down the street always? In which case, if it's coming down.
If it's coming down Dudley Avenue, we have nothing, that's not our problem.
But if we build up larger and higher.
We're on Dexter.
We could be, cause and effect, and that's the thing, you know, it's where the flow of the water goes.
That's right.
We have to really look at it to make sure that it's not, that we did not cause it.
It's not, it's not, our, our experts have done that.
Well, I just, I just hoping that we just step back and take a look.
Well, you don't have to hope, it's done.
Well, until it's finished, the grass is growing, and then it rains, and we can see what happens, because it's going to be next spring, you know, I hope that we just don't leave the residents in a worse position than they were before.
That was never, never in the plan.
Well, I guess we're going to have to watch that issue, so I'm going to move on to the next one, which is expenditures and revenues, but there is no report unless somebody else has come up with a report. We will discuss it at the budget meeting in one or two weeks. Enrollment reports, do you have any comment? Anybody want to comment on the enrollment report?
I kind of, I want to say something. I, I'm, I'm just concerned, you know, last week, we discussed the closing of, or not supporting fixing the roof at Triplet School and, and trying to house all the kids at the new Pell School. And I'll just say that the superintendent, when he did all the estimates for how many kids are going to be there, just know that we subtracted all the military kids who are leaving, and we really didn't add the military kids who are coming, and they've always, every year, have replaced themselves. So, there, there are quite a few kids that are missing off that list, so when we look at that, we have to be very careful not to make predictions based on knowing what kids are leaving, because we can pretty much predict there are kids coming from the military. And so, I'm a little afraid, that's why I tried to pull that last time, because I, I just don't want to see us doing what that Pell Options subgroup, you know, we really worked hard to make sure that we're not going to use the stage and the art and the music room to house students. So, I just, I, I want to make sure that everybody's aware of that, that that was, when I went back and checked those numbers.
Thank you. Jumping down to the next item, which is 8.3 Rogers High School Damage Report. Let Dr. Nasbo to comment.
Yes, we, we got a report, we got a report from Paul Fagan that there was damage at Rogers High School, that four windows in the back area of Rogers High School between the auditorium and the gym were damaged over April vacation. Police report was filed, and the estimated window replacement cost in the report is 15, which was, the estimated cost was 1,500, but the actual cost is closer to 2,000, and labor will be in addition to that. Reinstallment is supposed to take place next week, so has that taken, has that taken place, Jess?
Hopefully by the end of, next week, we'll have that completed.
Just, Charlie, we saw the damage reports?
Yes.
Just as a point of interest, I've put on for our next liaison meeting, I'd like us to discuss the condition of the track at Rogers High School because it's in a really bad shape, and kids are getting injured to the point that now we're not having any, we're not, next year, they're not going to have any home track meets at all because the, it's too dangerous, and my niece just came home, and she may have broken a bone on it.
Where is it located? You're talking.
What's that?
Where is that?
This is the track around Rogers, the, which the city owns.
Right down here.
Yep, the, the running track, it's in.
The city owns it.
The city owns it, so we've got to make sure that it's a, it's a hazard at this point.
It's city property, though?
City, the city, the city maintains it, and so, anyway, that, so talk about damage reports.
You've got to bring it up at the.
I put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Liaison.
Yeah, and I've taken pictures of it, too.
Good.
Question?
Yes.
The, the damage, the cost for the damage, is insurance involved in this?
Yeah, we have the trust. We belong to the trust.
The last one, Superintendent's update.
Superintendent's update, I, let's hold this until he shows up for the next meeting. Is that all right with everybody?
It's a three-page document.
Just thinking, and it's all fairness to him, so he can, it's up to you. You want to pass it? You want a motion?
I might as well accept it because he's.
All right, go ahead and make a motion then.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have, we have scheduled for next, this week, this Thursday, a budget meeting. I think in view of Dr. Ambrosia's illness, that probably be best to put that off for a week.
Can we afford it? Do we have time?
Yeah, because, because we're not going to meet with the city until the 30th.
Okay.
Is that all right with everybody?
Which meeting? The 16th?
Thursday, they're going to put it up for next week.
Yeah, we'd be, 16th, go to 20th.
But if there's no, any new information, can we get that, at least so we can look at it, absorb it, instead of waiting for the night?
What is he, what?
If we have any new information by Thursday, or maybe by Friday, whatever it is, so we have it before the next meeting.
Wendy, did you hear that?
Yes, I don't think there'll be any new information as of Thursday.
Okay, well, you know, we get it before the next meeting, so we can read it the night before, two nights or whatever.
We'll, we'll.
All right. Now, the other one is, the city council, we'd asked for this combined meeting between the city council's school committee to be on the 30th, which is a Thursday. They initially said no because the mayor was going to be at Queen Anne's School opening at 7:00, but he was agreeable to start at 4:30, and the people I've talked to here on the committee would be available, but the city council wants to get a sense of, can we all be there?
What day is that? The 26th?
The 30th?
Thursday.
Thursday, May 30th, at 4:30 in the city council chambers.
You're okay, aren't you?
I could even go earlier.
Yeah, I know you can. Everybody else available?
Thursday, May 30?
Yeah.
At 4:30.
4:30. Okay, Wendy, you got that answer? You can respond.
I'll let them know tomorrow, and then hopefully they'll have their consensus on their side, if they're going on their side.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Shall move.
Seven.
Seven.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you.